He's wanting to take over the board of the important.
Okay, we're in love.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call our special meeting of the Wayne County Board of Education to order. 401. We'll stand, we'll say the pledge, and our student committee center will lead it.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Let the record show that all board members are present in person this evening. And we'll begin with our local school improvement council presentation from Eastland Elementary.
I said it's been really busy, more busy than usual beginning of the year. And I worked on this, and I realized when I printed out today, it was like 22 pages. So you can read this later. Yes.
It'd be like reading a novel.
I'm gonna let you read on your own, son of a bitch. Of course.
Anybody needs a screen, right?
Yeah, Katie's gonna do part of the presentation for our parent night. And I'll just talk a little bit about our dad and stuff in the paper here. Okay, so.
Feel free to move if you're fine.
So with our attendance this year, we've been doing, starting the day each day with a little chant. And we are always, every morning we get on Teams meetings so the kids think they're on TV. And they help me with it. So we do this chant where we say, "Eastland Lakers," and then the rest of the building has the PLC show up. And they are having a ball with it. I thought they'd get tired of it. And so I was gonna do it like every other day. And I ended up having to do it every day. And we do it two or three times because they like it to get louder. So they really like that. We are doing quite a bit of attendance, attendance. One of the things which I haven't got to do yet is our banner there. I'm going to be taking the kids who have perfect attendance. And I've got them these little clocks that light up. And they're gonna get one of those and wanna take a picture there. So I'm hoping to do that at the end of this week or beginning of next. But they've been really excited about it. I feel like the segments and stuff, even though we have the hand put them out, hasn't been as bad this year. And I feel like the parents are trying to get here. So things are working out there. We do some other things like, so our Title I specialist, they track and you're spelling attendance. And they still record the classroom. So each class gets to do that. But then we have attendance wars at the end of every week. And I announced that on the announcements. And they get some free time. And they get to carry our mascot around for the week. And then at the end of every nine weeks, we see who's the winner of that. And they get to do something even more special. Our volunteer secretary would like kickball it around. She's not aware of that yet, but she's not, she's fast and she's got some long legs. So anyway, but they're having a lot of fun with that. They really look forward to it every week. Anything else we could do on that too? Yeah, we really try to, you know, the counselor reinforces good attendance. We contact parents. We try to reach out and be helpful if they're having a little trouble getting up to school or sending in their notes, things like that. So I think it's really been a way to reach out to the parents. So it's not been that difficult to keep up. In our enrollment, this is the part where I'm not really excited this year. I'm starting out, having almost 140 kids. And I've lost, I'm down to like 124. Some have gone homeschool, some have moved out of the area. Couple kids have moved foster kids. But that's been very disappointing. Because we had a lot of fun things that we think our school is the best. It's exciting, we try to reach out. So that's been a little disappointing. Don't know what the answer is to that. And then our academic growth. So with our academic growth, we do some things like with our reading achievement. You know, we have our book reading machine that's still going strong. We're just now starting to reach some goals. I think last Tuesday, we were able to get books out for goals. So that was exciting. We do the AR points. And if you notice here on reading achievement, we're really jumping into the science of reading. I have some of my teachers that are interested in taking the courses. I'm taking the courses that are offered right now too. And I feel like everyone wants to learn more. I definitely have a stack of work. And then our writing improvement. We're using two new writing programs. Did we start both of them once here or just one of them? Okay, both of them once here. And we saw pretty good.
Yeah, we actually compared like first grade from the year before up to this year in writing. We looked at the writing little parts to make sure that it was 90% worth of the work.
Yeah, it was really, really amazing year. So I felt like everybody really put their whole heart into that and worked through it. So we also use, the great thing about our family is we have Rhonda. O'Neil, Rhonda O'Neil, who helps with the writing and the reading. And then with math, we have Kelly Harper. And they're just invaluable. You know, I think other people will, on their mind, will be able to do their job. But I'm not sure how, but we is effective. These people are really talented and do a lot for our school. Just out in the classroom. And then, of course, we are a Title I school and another Title I, two Title I teachers. Being able to have a full-time interventionist this year, which I don't think ended up being that way at most schools. But where the third grade success act, they were getting As in second grade. And then halftime interventions in third. And my aide had been out in second grade. And so we were able to use interventions in second and third and keep them here full-time. So that's been really, really nice to have. And then, of course, we have more highlights and opportunities. Like we are one of the schools that has the summer school and after-school program, robotics. And Ms. Wacht still does the civics. This will be her third year doing the civics. It's been a really good experience for the kids. So you can see some of the data. These first two graphs are probably the most telling here. Now we did get a new grade dealing with our math. And it wasn't for lack of effort, but we did go down a little bit this year. But we have steady inclines in our reading and our science. But if you look to the next page, which adds our benchmark we just took, you can see that all of our scores are already, you know, we're already testing up there. I feel like it's gonna be a great year to go to build some good. Are there other pages here? If you wanna look a little bit more in-depth there. Then I can let you do that. Just some explanations over the last three years for mathematics, reading, science. And one of the reasons, another reason this box is a little bit bulky too is because AI is fantastic. So I would just like put in my data. And then I'd say, well, I wanna see it this way. And I want, I wanna look at it and compare these. So you can take a look at that coming in the next minute. My East, our Zoom West Virginia. Our benchmark, our last year's assessments. Some of the mistakes that we have put together too. So. Do you think they have any questions specifically in this card? And then, we always like to do this every year, this strategic planning. We always kind of narrow that down so we have all of us have the copy to look at. When we lose our way in the middle of the year, you know, you still have, here's our goals. Here's what we're focused on. And that really does help quite a bit. And then, I always add the progress notes. I've done that every year where you can see really how each class is performing. And even, you know, even more specifically like how many are performing at master. And then, if you wanna pass through that and get to strategic collaboration to raise proficiency grades at Eastland Elementary. These are just the things that we do. And we talk about them all the time with the principal meetings at a district level. But, you know, of course, our data-driven instruction and monitoring. This back is fabulous at that. Everything they do, any grouping, you know, any pullouts, anything like that is based on this. And so they, you know, are grouping and pullouts to change at any time depending on what the kids need. And the data that we're seeing, they're in this. Ferguson and Miss Pearson monitor that constantly. And then our 10-minute meetings for targeted support. I haven't had time to have like a real official 10-minute meeting. I'll let them, we talk all the time. I have to talk all the time when people stop by my office. But I'm excited to get those started. Our PLCs. And our PLCs are really strong. Our teachers look forward to the time that they have to do that together every other week. And they go over, you know, and they, they really do a good job trying to bring the different grade levels together. And every day we looking at the same thing and going back to meeting our goals and bringing in the data. So that's a constant. This is actually one of my goals for the year as a principal. A lot of times for PLCs, I know that they do a great job. But for me, a lot of times I might end up covering or something because.
And we're spelling attendance and they still record the classroom. So each class gets to do that. But then we have attendance wars at the end of every week. And I announced that on the announcements. And they get some free time and they get to carry our math spot around for the week. And then at the end of every nine weeks, we see who's the winner of that. And they get to do something even more special, a volunteer or secretary would like kickball it around. She's not aware of that yet, but she's not, she's fast and has some long legs. So anyway, but they're having a lot of fun with that. They really look forward to it every week. Anything else we can give on that too? Yeah, we really try to, you know, the counselor reinforces good attendance. We contact parents. We try to reach out and be helpful if they're having a little trouble getting up to school or send them in their notes, things like that. So I think it's really been a way to reach out to the parents. So it's not been that difficult to keep up. And in our enrollment, this is the part where I'm not really excited this year. I'll start with that, having almost 140 kids. And I've lost, I'm down to like 124. Some have gone homeschool, some have moved out of the area. Couple of kids have moved foster kids. But that's been very disappointing because we had a lot of fun things. That we think our school does the best and it's exciting and we try to reach out. So that's been a little disappointing. Don't know what the answer is to that. And then our academic growth. So with our academic growth, we do some things like with our reading achievement. You know, we have our book reading machine that's still going strong. We're just now starting to reach some goals. I think last Tuesday, we were able to get books out for goals. So that was exciting. We do the A R points. And if you notice here on reading achievement, we're really jumping into the science of reading. I have some of my teachers that are interested in taking the courses. I'm taking the courses that are offered right now too. And I feel like everyone wants to learn more. I definitely have a stack of words. And then our writing improvement, we're using two new writing programs. Did we start both of them once here or just one of them? Okay, both of them once here and we saw pretty good.
Yes. We actually compared like from grade from the year before up to this year in writing. We looked at the writing little parts to make sure that it was 90% worth of work.
Yeah, it was really, really amazing year. So I felt like everybody really put their whole heart into that and worked through it. So we also use, the great thing about our family is we have Rhonda. O'Neil, Rhonda O'Neil, who helps with the writing and the reading. And then with the math, we have Kelly Harper. And they're just invaluable. You know, I think other people will, on their mind, will be able to do their job. But I'm just not sure how, if what we is effective. These people are really talented and do a lot for our school, just out in the classroom. And then of course, we are a title one school and another title one, two title one teachers. Being able to have a full-time interventionist this year, which I don't think ended up being that way at most schools. But where the third grade success act, they were getting As in second grade and then halftime interventions in third. And my aide had been out in second grade. And so we were able to use our interventions in second and third and keep them here full-time. So that's been really, really nice to have. And then of course, we have more highlights and opportunities. Like we are one of the schools that has a seminar school and after-school program, robotics. And Ms. Wacht still does the civics. This will be her third year doing the civics. It's been a really good experience for the kids. So you can see some of the data. These first two graphs are probably the most telling here. Now we did get a new grade dealing with our math and it wasn't for lack of effort, but we did go down a little bit this year. But we have steady inclines in our reading and our science. But if you look to the next page, which adds our benchmark we just took, you can see that all of our scores are already, you know, we're already testing up there. I feel like it's going to be a great year to go to build some depth. Are there other pages here? If you want to look a little bit more in-depth there. Then I can let you do that. Just some explanations over the last three years for our mathematics, reading, science. And one of the reasons, another reason this box is a little bit bulky too is because AI is fantastic. So I would just like put in my data and then I'd say, well, I want to see it this way. And I want, I want to look at it and compare these. So you can take a look at that coming in the next minute. My East Orange, Virginia, our benchmark, our last year's assessments, some of the mistakes we had put together too. So. Do you think they have any questions specifically in this card? And then we always like to do this every year, this strategic planning. We always kind of narrow that down so we have, all of us have the copy to look at. When we lose our way in the middle of the year, you know, you still have, here's our goals. Here's what we're focused on. And that really does help quite a bit. And then I always add the progress notes. I've done that every year where you can see really how each class is performing and even, you know, even more specifically like how many are performing as master of the field. Then we want to pass through that and get to strategic collaboration to raise proficiency grades at each level in elementary. These are just the things that we do and we talk about them all the time with the principal meetings at a district level. But of course, our data-driven instruction and monitoring. This back is fabulous at that. Everything they do, any grouping, you know, any pullouts, anything like that is based on this. And so they, you know, are grouping and pullouts to change at any time depending on what the kids need and the data that we're seeing. They're in Miss Ferguson and Miss Pearson, monitor that constantly. And then our 10-minute meetings for targeted support. I haven't had time to have like a real official 10-minute meeting. I'll let them talk all the time. People stop by my office, but I'm excited to get those targeted. Our PLCs. And our PLCs are really strong. Our teachers look forward to the time that they have to do that together every other week. And they go over, and they, they really do a good job trying to bring the different grade levels together. And everybody looking at the same thing and going back to meeting our goals and bringing in the data. So that's a constant. This is actually one of my goals for the year as a principal. A lot of times for PLCs, I know that they do a great job. But for me, a lot of times I might end up covering or something because we do a different schedule that day. So for me, I'm trying to get in for each of my PLCs at least once. So that's two for me a month at least. So I'm kind of excited about that. Parent engagement is really big to us here. It's kind of a year challenge, every year challenge, right? That Katie adores and she'll get one of them in a minute. So I'll let her kind of jump in there in a second. And then we are blessed here to have some of our teachers. They're on the math conreys for the county, the LA conre. I have master teachers here. They, you can tell it's like the whole family, all the schools. And, you know, they might have other schools in grade levels they attended. So we're very fortunate here with that. No lack of resources as far as teacher talent and what they can help the students. And our book study, we're getting ready for our book study this week, the building thing in the classroom. I'm pretty excited about that. We've never done one here since I've been here. So I'm excited about that. And I'll just go ahead and finish up so you can have this fun part when Katie gets up here, right? So again, I have only, I said discipline rates. I didn't really think I had enough to have a rate. So I just wrote, you know, I've had two out-of-school suspensions and one bus suspension so far this year. But I did include, if you go back a page, our discipline policy. And our teachers, they, they want to have the power in their classroom. And they send students to me when they have repeat offenses or it's something that the kid just needs to have a little time away or, you know, something maybe a little more severe. But they pretty much use little, you know, like their little discipline slips and stuff. We send those home for parents and we're always contacting parents. I follow up with a phone call if I get three of those. So that seems to work really well for us at this level. And then we also do our turtle traits each month to just encourage and teach them these different traits to work for. And the kids really do want to get student up to month and they'll ask me all the time, how do I get that? And I'll say, talk to your teacher. And I'll go over the announcements once a month, a few times a month too. And we'll say what this means, how this looks for them to act that way. And that seems to be something they really kind of strive for. So, and then the very last thing was our facility improvements needed. I have a few pictures here. We had a tree fall off by it. And so our fence was damaged and it could potentially be a problem. It's over to the side a little bit, but it still would be very accessible out there. And then our fence down there near the fire department, the big fence, it's just out of state today. So we could use a little repair or replacement there. We need some tile around the, the mugs in the boys' bathroom upstairs. And then in our gym, we had painted it and stuff, but the top part, the insulation's torn and everything. It would look really nice if we could get it back. And then I know this is really expensive, but these two doors right here, I worry about because it comes from the main building to this building and we don't have keypads on it. And it's almost impossible to keep locked because we have a lot of traffic through here. We have gates that are locked, you know, but I do worry that those are kind of open. Yeah, yeah, I would love to have keypads there. But I think that that's about it for everything I have, except for Miss Katie.
Hey, Mrs. Alexander Kane, the night of our event, it was so nice. So we wanted to go and share a little bit. So I am Katie, sorry if these quotes are kind of strange. My partner in crime, Evan Pearson, couldn't make it this evening. But I'm so excited to share with you our rollout for red carpet for literacy. So every year, we kind of challenge ourselves to come up with an engagement act for our families. And this year, we focused specifically on literacy because the years before we had done that. And anyway. We focused on literacy for this event and okay, we did an old Hollywood theme and the kids had no idea that we were going to all dress up in this theme. So let me just tell you, they were quite surprised and it was such a fun time. So our staff never leaves to make me like, I'll throw up this strange crazy idea and they're like, sure, let's do it. So anyway, I'm always so thankful for our friends here. And there's always so much prep work involved. So like I said, this is kind of an old Hollywood lamp theme that we did. And so for our rollout, the red carpet for literacy, we of course had a rollout for our carpet. And we also sent home our C P's so that we would know exactly who was coming and we could prep. And we also bought golden tickets for each kid out of the class that they had to rotate through three different literacy stations. So at each station, they received a Star Cold, a Star Cold Fench in their own ticket. And once they got through Star Cold Fench with their ticket, they got to meet us down to the grand finale over in the gym. And we also had kids that donated some goodies for us. It was really just such a great event. And we knew logistically, like logistics are my thing, y'all. So we knew logistically, we did not want to have 80 people going through our hallways and trying to get to these different center rotations. So we had our students who were, they were just doing the literacy rotation and our parents stayed in here who had our black diamonds. And so we had this all set up for them. And we actually had a recipe for reading menu that we had created using Canva, which is my favorite thing ever. So we went over our appetizer section, which was eight or two tips and tricks for reading. And if you want to keep your eyes on that, you guys can all see. It's kind of extensive, so I'll just do kind of an overview. So we had appetizers, which were our eight or two tips and tricks. And we talked about delectable read alouds and delicious environmental print and just different ways they could incorporate this at home with kids. And then our main dishes were for our three class students and just ways that they could incorporate conversation at home. We have a gummy patty that we discussed and like two people attracting etcetera. But you can kind of speak for their ear and kind of their school students and all that. So we really had a good time. And the parents were so engaged and I'm just so like, everyone just showed up and showed out. So it was really great. And then, I really hope this works. And Ms. Alexander is here for the fun, but he knows I do. Either way, it's just the game jazz playing back. And these are our teachers coming in for an introduction for all of the kids. So if you can't tell, really do come up quick for your round of ears. And there's a little bit of a behind the back. We can see how it's kind of all of our teachers were good students. They were getting ready to appear, make a big debut. So they were all hiding behind these doors and we had all of our kids seated back here with the parents. And then we turned off the lights, turned on the game jazz and they walked out. So it was pretty cool. And then, so we had mentioned we separated our parents and we did a parent training. And while they were doing their parent training, we had kids rotating through three different literacy stations. And like I said, they had a golden ticket taken with them. But we wanted to ensure our centers were developmentally appropriate for our kids. So we kind of split, we had K through two centers in the site work pop. We did a lights, camera, action, flashlight reading station and a visualization station that included a read aloud about going to the movies and a comic strip season. So it was all movie themed because we can't help ourselves. All right, and then our three through five literacy centers, we had a popcorn bucket ball toss, which was all about me and I am. And then we did concession stand creations where they had to do a descriptive writing about which concession stand kind of delicious treat they would choose. And then we did a pop breakfast in it before. It was just a rock day and we were just so proud of them. Now for act two, we went to the jam for our big Pixar short. And Evan Pearson, the match, she's my kind of like the teacher and I will remember that. And she got this big organic screen donated. And so now we have it for our school for each time we want to use it. But anyway, we set it up like a drive-in movie. So the kiddos each had their own parking spot. It was a yoga mat down on the floor. And if they presented their golden ticket, they all received popcorn and water. And then we used the Pixar short for teaching and listening. So we clogged it every few minutes to ask questions about interesting, kind of promote comprehension. And then final thing we did was we had all the students give a drum roll piece. And then they went ahead and did a scratch off on the golden ticket to see how much they did. And here you can see it was Curly Kissner. And I don't know if she's ever won anything in her life, but she was so excited about it. It was a big deal. But all of this has been donated as well. It was like a movie themed kind of like snack box, goodie box. You want $250, one more gift card? I was like, kids, I want one too. But they kind of, it's a great time. So our results, we feel like everything went really well. We had 67 total participants, not including our staff members, if I have anyone who's staffed. And that was the week of the summer bug. So we did really good having 67 participants. I kept praying, I was like, Lord, please don't let our staff get done with my focus event. But anyway, we had all 35 students, five were filled on day one of our C P's running home. They were all really excited about the event. And here you can see, these are all our parents that stayed over for the parent engagement section of the night. And then, and then here we had our students answering questions, answering questions based off the Pixar short movie that we watched. But overall, it was so great. We had parents commenting on social media all about how much fun they had had. And we did have photo ops because hello, we got to have photo ops. So we had those ready and we had so many families just enjoying that. But overall, a fun time at all and see. But just thinking now, you'll have to stay tuned to see what's coming for this spring. But if you do have some good ideas for this spring, we'll wait until now.
Very good, is that it?
That's it.
So.
I'm going to sit there on page 10 for that question.
So we know you're back at your P L S course. So the writing program, so we're at year two of that? Or do we, do we go like that?
I don't think so. I think it has to stay a whole process. And then we have to sort of, and I'm sorry to put it right now, why would you be all for it? And how do you lose information on the text to develop different writing? I know I've got, this is mine, two and four threes this year. Looking in even through third grade into starting the writing process this year. I've seen a different, absolutely different review for writing. But I think it's also consistency across the grade levels. So our K through two is using part of their grid. So by the time they're getting to the second grade, they're already starting to undertake a core of how they're supposed to structure their introduction or post-sentence. So I'm building on that. And then once they get up to step, for the top store. Then they're going to use that third grade and just keep building for more than fifth. So I think it's going to be a probably, I'm sure it's going to grow because of the field as they went third grade, they're already a bit exposed to that. And then we're going to build over that for the fourth grade. So I feel like we're going to see those scores continue as we practice.
The quality we have, going to, how we're going to do it.
I feel like this area, it's absolutely, issues was better. And here are our belts, how to work in different explorations because we have situations where we do a lot more hands-on. And so it's not I do, you do, or I do, you do, you do. It's more of them doing it, exploring the path. And I know personally in my class, after teaching for a whole year last year, I didn't have a lot of vibes, we were in small groups, but it was smoother. So I feel like my class was really better. I'm not one of my peers who ever wanted to experience. And then, with any reading program, it's a very serious business. We have to sort of know what we're going to be all for so hard together. There's a space and every acquisition is always hard to do. But it will probably be less than seven years. So we got sort of like, we just appreciate it and so much respect. And we, we really utilize our PLCs too. Because we've had this issue where like, oh my gosh, today and then we're supposed to be with these kids. And we've been really raising some ideas, I guess, so.
You all need support, like probably you can, you need anything at all to reach out. We need somebody to come out and help them in letting.
We, Kelly, we, once I have, it was going to happen for the last year. Yeah, I had two last year. And then this year, Megan, yes. And I will say Megan, that's her style. She came right in about last year. Felt like everybody was a little, like everything's awkward a little bit. There's a lot and everything, but once they started seeing how it worked. And then the people from our A B board, Kelly would come in and say, hey, I bet you didn't realize this or this or this. So they were ready for that next step and lunch, whatever she presented. So they had a lot of support for that. Well, and just in case you don't remember, that this was our West Virginia State County of the Year finalists. So where I was here, and we want support, I feel like from the county. We really do. I mean, there's not a day I, if I need, maybe Stephanie, Tanya, Mr. Walker, but it'll be fine. I've got that right there. Kelly Arthur, Ron, I haven't got to use Rhonda yet, she's supposed to come this week too. So I mean, I don't really know what else we could ask for as far as support. With your, your students that come along to my school, do you do anything as like, I think? I mean, I did kind of talk to them, you know. And I think that's, because that's an option for them now. You know, like, I felt like one of my family had a lot of siblings last year. And they attended, they really, they nervous. So then as soon as they started getting sick, they were sick right off the bat. They just thought they were for homeschooling. And then another, I felt like, I think they were seeing behaviors that maybe they didn't address. And some of it was just easier to keep. I know just some just felt it was easier and I expect it to be back. And they realized it's not easy. I've had that class year happen and they realized that like, we're, we can hit them with new, meet up with what they need to do. So some of them, I think maybe one or two, but I really think some of them back. And maybe be more, be more, yeah. Yeah, but then we just lost them, you know, we had a couple of foster kids that were back. And then just a few moved. But James Downey, so that was good. Yeah, so we take him away and same county. Anything else, anyone else? Thank you all very much. Congratulations.
I think we have Marcia's dad and Amy tomorrow, but I think that they're bound scorecard.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm excited to look over it tomorrow.
Yeah. I like the shoulders in my back. I mean, I'm a little nervous. Okay, let's move on to our superintendent recommend.
Okay, let's move on to our superintendent's approval of the following action items. Additional items received prior to the time of the meeting may be added. Discussion and or separate action items may be requested by members of the board, who is superintendent. Items are subject to change. Any ones will be filled in prior to the meeting. In the event nominee withdrawals, we reserve the right to put the next candidate in that position. So number one is considered for approval to recommend personnel matters on page one. Question by Randy, second. Uh, John Ude.
That's just largely the hiring of substitutes. Uh, there is the, uh, fourth grade teacher position at Kellogg, where we have the, uh, overage in those, both of those classes. Um, and it's been an overage since the beginning of the year. And, uh, since, since it's remained an overage, um, we're going to go ahead and fill that position.
Any other questions, Jermaine? I'm heard all in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Motion carries five to zero. Number two is considered for approval to purchase or revision order in quotes, excess of $5,000 on pages two through eight. Motion, good group. Motion by John Ude, second.
I see you.
So, um, we have, there's a number of P Os here. First up is, uh, Playmates, um, and that's their reimbursement for preschool meals. And I've asked Lisa to put together some information for you. So that's with your information here this evening, you should have it. Um, it is the one with an apple on the front page. Lisa's always creative. So if we, if you have questions regarding that P O, she can, uh, she can respond. So, um, I know some of the questions that came up at the last meeting, Lisa, were about, how do they, how do they submit numbers? So I know we have approximately 145 students that are at off-site locations this year. Last year it was around 169. How do they submit numbers? How does the whole process work?
So I don't know if you guys had time to refer me what I sent you. And so I would go briefly, um, just for clarification purposes, because I understand that it's a lot to do and understand this question. So, um, just real quick, and what Megan mentioned, I sent you, I listed the five Playmates locations and the schools that they are attached to, their partner schools, we call them. And the secretaries at those schools that are designated my food service secretaries. So those ladies get their meal numbers each day. And they use, she uses their Weebus number. So they are attached to our schools, they have Weebus numbers. And she enters their meal accounts each day. And also, just some examples, so you can see what that would look like. When a Playmate sends a lunch, so a breakfast stand, some facts, some females, whatever the secretaries.
Well, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Like, in the Westmoreland Playmates, probably two-thirds of those kids are Central City.
I'm sorry.
Two-thirds of those kids are Campbell County.
Yes, we don't.
Now, you all divide that up, that, that.
Those are not our students. Those are attached to our.
They don't have our resources.
Okay.
We don't count those students. Just our students that are attached to C K on the first school. Or when you said Westmoreland, it would be Kellogg. It's Kellogg School, yes.
So they would have a specific Weebus number that differentiates them from Campbell County?
Yeah, so they're actually enrolled in Kellogg School. So Bidget can pull them up. Um, so she has no access to the Campbell County students.
So regardless of where they live, they're enrolled in our schools. So it'd be, it, you know, it's almost like a transfer. If they, if they've been accepted to that, um, to that Playmates, then they're enrolled at Kellogg. So they count in our enrollment.
Okay, so for example, I'd like to count, um, the next page. Where sophisticated contractors signed with them last year. And that is the reimbursement rates for Playmates. That is federally set number. They are under the umbrella of what's called C A C F P. We are under the umbrella of the National School of Breakfast Program. So those were the rates they get reimbursed. And on the sheet after that page set are the rates that we get reimbursed for breakfast and lunch. Our rates are a little bit higher than their rates.
Yeah, I have a question. Those rates that are, you have listed in that email that we got, how do those compare with what we pay for a student's lunch, say, here at Eastland? Are those comparable? Uh, because I felt, I felt that that was a little, a little more than.
Do you think Playmates numbers are a little more, or our, our number?
I did. I, I want to know how much does it cost to feed a student at our schools to?
I don't have that exact number for you. I can try to get something for you.
How much are we reimbursed for a student at this school?
Oh, for this school, well, that's on page, uh, four. This is last year's rates, but I include the this year's rates as well in the hand. Is that what you're asking?
No, that's not my, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking what does it cost one kind of schools to feed our students in our schools as well? Is the question I asked. Yes.
It, it varies per meal, but I can get you an app and divide for breakfast.
That's what I was wanting.
But it's nowhere near, um, the cost of our reimbursement. If that's what your question.
So it's less than?
Yes, yes, it's less than our.
So it costs us less to feed them?
Than what we're getting reimbursed. Yes, that's correct. Now, there is a little bit of inflation on this food this year. We've been talking about that with the, the Southwest room Kellogg. And we've been working with US Foods to find, you know, cheaper products. There's a little bit of inflation. But yeah, the cost per meal is less than what we are reimbursed. Okay, so, um, that's those pages there.
So when I'm looking at page four, so for free lunch, um, $4.45? Am I reading that right?
Correct.
And that's what we are reimbursed for every child that eats lunch?
In our county.
In our county.
We are labeled Community Eligibility, Eligibility Convention C E P. That's how we get free meals for our students. So on an average, our schools are economically disadvantaged at a 60% unemployment rate based on the federal, um, algorithm, the formula, the federal formula.
And then, and then for breakfast, we're reimbursed $2.84.
Correct, yeah.
And so to Mark's question, the cost, the cost for the meal, it just depends on what the meal is.
Yes.
And, um, okay, I got you.
For instance, pepper and rolls are the most expensive product we have, but it's our highest milk participation rate.
And you're grabbing no breakfast, like the cereal or whatever.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot cost.
Right, but you're still reimbursed $2.84 for every child to get one.
Yes.
Even if you only have 50 cents in the meal.
Yes, correct, yes.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I, I guess what I was getting at is, we do, we, we turn, this is what we give Playmates for feeding the kids that are, there's none of that we get to keep in our food services program.
Well, Tom, if I understand your question, we kind of make a little bit of money on that, on the reimbursement. Because I'm paying the same amount of meals that they're, they're making, they're invoicing we for. So if you look on the next.
Right, I under, I understand what you're saying. If they tell you that they fed 100 kids today at $4 and whatever, we have to pay them 400 and whatever.
Correct.
So that's what my question.
Yes, that is correct. Yes, that, that's correct. And then we turn around and claim the same number of kids on my month. Yes.
So we get reimbursed whatever we, whatever we've given Playmates to feed these children. We're reimbursed that same amount?
We're reimbursed, of course, a little more.
A little more than that, okay. So they're not, Playmaker's not making?
No, they're not. And in fact, I was, I've been thinking about this since Mr. Alexander asked me to provide some information for you. It's a really good partnership for us because we don't have to provide cooks at those locations for those students. They have their own cooks. So that's four full-time cook slash catering positions that we don't have to have in our county. So plus the catering vehicles, which we would have a purchase as well. So it's really good partnership. But they send me menus. Um, I don't have an example like report or they monitor, but they're required to be monitored just like we are. They're under state audits just like we are.
Do they compare with the menus that we provide?
Yeah, they have food, and I have an example of them. Yeah.
I'll take your buck.
Yeah, no, they do a good job with their menus from what I can tell.
So on page five, are these the rates that we will be paying this year? The 237 and the 443?
So five and six, so those are examples of last year's reimbursement. I don't have one for this year yet. I still, they'll put August and September together. Um, so we should be getting that anyway, but I think we haven't received that from him because I've not sent them their, their signed contract yet. So they're looking for that soon, probably before they invoice us for the first two months.
Okay, so did the, did the federal reimbursement rates change for this year?
Yes. Since I've had this position, our reimbursement rate, our reimbursement rates have increased each year. And I think that's the cost the federal government takes into account for inflation. But so do the C A C F P rates. Those also increase. So I gave you this year's rates, our agreement with Playmates, and then what our reimbursement rates are as well. From the state, say state, it's really good money, so I made my hands to the state department. Um, so, um, I also wanted to point out, I, I understand that purchase orders are worth $100,000. But if they, if they claim, and enrollment goes up and down. So when we say last year's enrollment was, what do we say, $169, or 169 students? Um, I don't have that in my mind. So we reimbursed them last year, total $102,110 and some change for their kiddos.
And all these students are offsite. They're not in our schools. They're all at those four facilities.
This is just the Playmates, yes. Um, so the purchase order of $100,000 was pretty right on last year. If they had claimed 169 students every day for every meal, say every kid was there for every meal every day, we would have had to reimburse them $157,000. So they're not doing that. I know that there's a question in the air about that, but, but my food service secretaries are really good and diligent about making sure the kids are there, that they say are there. And, and I do believe that the feeding that kissers, they say they're feeding, because from what I know about preschool, their meals are famous time. So when their kiddos come in, they're all kind of sitting together eating. So yeah, they can provide those most of them, and that's it. So, um, I think that's all that I have for you.
Well, I think I got to the information that I was talking about was pages eight and nine.
Yes, that's correct. So those are.
Those are the new numbers for this year.
Yes.
So Playmates will make 246 per breakfast.
Correct.
We're reimbursed 294 per breakfast.
Correct, that's 48 cents more. We are reimbursed 48 cents more per breakfast meal and 2 cents more per lunch.
And the lunch is 462, and they're reimbursed at 460.
Yes, so the money that we reimburse to Playmates, of course, goes towards their food costs, but also goes towards their, um, their food personal costs for their breakfast. Hope that I helped clear the line on that. Do you guys have any more questions? I hope you enjoy your company.
Thank you, we will.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions, Karen, about that purchase order?
Thanks, Melissa, I appreciate your explanation.
You're very welcome. Thank you, pleasure, of course.
And then, yeah, we have the rest of the P Os in there. Um, so out of our professional development funds, um, we, of course, are working with Carnegie on our math program, K through eight. And, uh, the P O that you see here is from a title, Federal Professional Development Funds, um, for Carnegie to come in the district, give support to teachers and to principals at the schools.
How many days are they doing this? On the average, how many times you seen at Eastland Elementary? How many times will Carnegie people be at Eastland Elementary assisting you, just average?
Well, I mean, right, pretty often, probably at least once a month last year. But this year, I'm not sure that they're having some meetings.
Yeah, well, we haven't approved them yet.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's what I, the rating was really helpful.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, they were very helpful. And we, and that's the other thing, like, my staff was excited when they come because they would break the exam or jump right into what they were doing and show them. So that is always money goes thin, not when somebody teaches them, oh, yeah, you can do this lab, or not jump in. No, they were being long cuts, so.
I understand. I just, I just asked a lot of questions about finances because, you know, tax payers money that we're dealing with. But I'm going to be as much of a watchdog as I possibly can.
That's one, that's one of your skills.
Tom, I got a question.
Sure.
This virtual academy, is that the same one that those kids have taken out of the home? Six of them?
Um, I'm not sure. There are several, there are several virtual, virtual schools that exist. And so what this bill is, is the, uh, what this bill is, is the, uh, any student that left us after second month last year, after October 1st, those, uh, they bill. Okay, and we can do the same to them. If there were students that were in the virtual and they came back to us after October 1st. So we are providing some bills to some places. This was our bill that came from the state.
And this comes through the Department of Ed?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, the Department of Ed reports the numbers to us. And I check with Jeb to make sure that everything looks accurate.
Mission required through the state.
Yes. And then the Promethium panels on page seven, those are just wear and tear, replacement of Promethium panels, um, as they break down.
Now, is the Carnegie money that's out of the title funds?
Yes, it's out of title funds for P D. Yep, and we did a, uh, we did a, the state, um, had us do a request for proposal on that. So we actually put out, you know, P D services. Of course, we were very interested in Carnegie since we have their curriculum. Um, but they, they had responded and, uh.
So we bit it out?
Yeah.
I said it earlier, not in the meeting, but that is a really good deal on that truck. The low mileage that it had on it.
Yeah.
I don't know who found that, but two days.
Bill Priest found that. Bill Priest found that. So it's a utility truck, low miles, good price. You know, he told me the miles and he said, now, how, how much you think? And I was, in my mind, I was thinking 50, $60,000. And he said 38, and said, sold.
Go find another one now, Bill.
And we had, um, we purchased buses and, uh, we had some money left over.
So this is not even coming out of?
Yeah, it's not, this is not coming where, you know, usually we pay for this out of county funding, but we've got some extra transportation funding that we can address. So I'm hoping to bring another one to you here at some point this year.
There was another question popped in my head, just, just curiosity. How, who, and how is it determined that we'll get that truck?
That we will get it?
No, who will get it in a maintenance way? Who determines that and how is it determined?
We usually determine, it's determined by the, uh, maintenance director. And if it's the, if it's at the bus garage, everybody uses it down there because they're all on site.
This will be based out of the bus garage?
No, 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 this one will be, Mr. Priest finds the vehicles. When we purchase them, we assign them to the maintenance department. So generally, they go and replace the oldest truck, the truck that's in the worst condition.
Because I'll be honest with you, I've had a couple of calls.
Wanting the truck?
Not necessarily wanting the truck.
That, that would be in line with.
Wanting to know the process.
Oh, yeah.
I couldn't tell.
Yeah, it comes up every time we buy one.
First place, you have this truck.
And I can, we'll update the list for you and show you which one we replaced.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Any other questions on those purchases? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. New business, consider for approval to MOU, including Mountain State and Wayne County Board, can hire one at-will extended school mental health lead grant special for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The board would pay Mountain State, five thousand dollar stipend plus seven percent interest rate of fees, a total of fifty-three fifty for the employee lead grant special for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
These, these are grant funded positions. So if you remember about two years ago, we secured an expanded school mental health grant. And, um, we had hired one, uh, position to oversee all the grant. That gentleman has left the position. And so, um, we're gonna use some of our own people to manage the grant and we're gonna do these, these positions. And the reason that we take them through Mountain State is that they are at-will. So anytime we want to stop, we can stop. So if anything would ever happen with the grant, regardless of what time of year it was, we can end the position.
Perfect. Motion by Jonita, second?
I'll make a motion.
Mark made you there.
Okay, I'll make the second one.
You missed the first one. Jonita made the first.
Jonita and Mark.
Then I'll make the third.
Okay, we'll take it. Any other questions?
I can't hear down there.
All in favor?
Aye.
And item number two is the same grant. So we, there will be a person that oversees the grant, has to turn in the expenses and all that. Item number two is, uh, three, um, implementation specialists. Those will be based out of each of the high schools ideally. And, uh, there's a thirty-five hundred dollar stipend, uh, for, for doing that expanded work. What they're working on is drug prevention activities and vaping prevention activities, not only in the high schools, but in the feeder schools as well.
Perfect. Right, any questions on number two for the grant implementation specialists?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Randy. No other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Three, consider for approval, adoption policy thirty-one, twenty, point one-two, that substitutes in areas of critical need and shortage.
So we had already updated the, the transportation for the, and so we've already sent that to the state. We have to do the professional annually as well. The only reason we had to take this through the first and second reading and out for public comment is because, um, that, uh, there were changes made in it. And so, um, we're ready to have it approved and sent. There were no comments for state.
No comments. Anyone, most, make a motion? Jonita, second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Consider for approval with twenty-twenty-five National Four-H Week Proclamation, recognizing October fifth through the eleventh as the National Four-H Week in Wayne County, at the page nine.
Okay, so.
Motion by?
Second.
Randy, second by Mark.
And I think, Lisa?
I have the proclamation.
Yes.
And it's written, I don't think, did you wanna read it or do you wanna just, um, my copy sent to you?
We can?
It's up to you, Mrs. This is, it's all due, it's all due for reading.
We, we can read it real quick. I'll be, I'll need practice with that in my head. Whereas, whereas Four-H is America's largest needs development organization supporting nearly six million youth across the country. And whereas Four-H has helped countless youth in Wayne County, West Virginia, to become competent, independent, resilient, compassionate leaders. And whereas Four-H is delivered by watered extensions, a community of more than one hundred public universities across the nation that provides experiences where young people learn by doing through hands-on projects in important areas of health, science, agriculture, and civic engagement. And whereas National Four-H Week showcases the incredible ways that Four-H inspires kids to do and highlights the remarkable Four-H youth in Wayne County, West Virginia, who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. Whereas Four-H's network of nearly five hundred thousand volunteers, thirty-five hundred professionals provides caring and supportive mentoring to all Four-Hers, helping them grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Now, therefore, I, as the hall president of the Wayne County Board of Education, do here guide proclaiming October fifth through the eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, as the National Four-H Week throughout Wayne County, West Virginia. And ensuring all citizens to recognize Four-H for their significant impact they have made on, made and continue to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for life.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job, Karen.
Thank you so much.
But we appreciate it, and we would like to.
I've got a couple copies here, uh, one for the board to keep and one for me to take and I was taking my office.
All right.
And I have a third copy which owns this one.
I would tell you, I've witnessed several of Four-H groups and kiddos, and they are, they are fantastic.
And the way you for all the support that you guys do, I want to give you guys, this is a tip you get, I want to show you. It was a lot of support. Mr. Trump was, was one of the best leaders. I think we are.
I want to thank you for watching after my grandson, Kelly Shane.
Oh, yes. At, at, yes, he is amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You probably know Sally, too.
Thank you.
You probably know Sally.
Yes, I love them, they're amazing. So I saw Shane today at, at middle school.
You did?
Oh, you're fine. Did we actually get a vote on that?
No, I think I just read it.
It's okay, I'll make a motion.
Who made? Who made the motion?
Randy made the motion. Mark made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. All right, there's our obvious, okay.
I told you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I told Jesse when I was at that.
All right, student attendant report, Dave. Three, three five.
We had the other day? I said, you know, that my grandson's wanting to replace her son as the mayor of Buffalo. She may have.
Okay, um, updates, there's a few things in your packet. Um, there, you'll see a letter from me to Director Andy Neptune, who has this school building afforded. This is our twenty-twenty-five needs project submission that we turned in to the state. We will interview, uh, in early November, and then they make a decision in December. This is for the state school entries or the rest of the schools that do not have state school records. And so that's in the packet. And I just wanted to provide you a copy of what we had submitted from the state. All right, the second item, um, because we submitted that needs project, I had to do a CEFP adjustment. You guys approved it on the board agenda. And it was just to add this, a few of the schools that weren't completed were under CEFP. But this is the work that was done and sent to the state. The state board has to approve this CEFP amendment, so this is in the state board's case now. Okay? And then the last thing is, um, the state department released their rank, their approval status and accreditation for the school districts. So I'm going to go with this one. Now, they do this with all fifty-five counties. So up at the top, um, it says, in, in the very first paragraph, it says, county status will be reviewed annually to determine two accountability measures. The balanced scorecard indicators of student performance, which we looked at the county scorecard. And success, uh, performance and success, and county operational effectiveness indicators of efficiency. So they look at all of our departments, federal programs, uh, child nutrition, um, special ed department, transportation, uh, personnel. They look at everything to determine where we are. So if you look at the very bottom of the first page, you'll see that our county's balanced scorecard indicator, indicators identified that we were on watch for attendance. And I'm not sure if there's one in the district and the state that's on. Um, but on watch for attendance, there were no support indicators and no intensive support indicators. So that's, that's good news. And it explains those stages in that middle box on the page. So there's, uh, no indicators coming up with our students' performance or success, uh, that are flagging any type of necessary for, any type of necessity for the state to consider, um, marking us down. On the back page, our county operational effectiveness indicators of efficiency. Uh, the departments are ranked as needs requirements or needs assistance. Now, you recall, I think, two years ago, our federal programs were marked as needs assist, uh, needs assistance. This year, we have one department marked as needs assistance, that's transportation. And so what that is about is they have, you know how we looked at the, uh, special education, the balanced scorecard? Um, or not the balanced scorecard, but that point system? It's like two, two pages, the desk audit is what they call it. Transportation has their own audit as well. So they have a point system where they get points for certain things, um, getting, uh, getting reports turned in on time. Um, when the state inspectors come, are there any defects with the buses? Either driver defects or, uh, mechanical defects? Are there any, uh, are there any, uh, lapses in record features as far as driver certifications and things like that? There's a number of things. We're gonna go over those at a meeting. Uh, it'll probably be two meetings from now, we'll go through that full report and look at, uh.
But we're at the same level.
No, no, we didn't, I got this first. Yeah, I haven't seen the official report earlier. So we're, uh, we should have it, the official report, uh, if we can look at. And then, um, I can tell you, the early indications are, so what they do is they divide the, uh, state up into four regions. And, uh, they base, like, your number of defects. You have, you have to be in like the top seventy-five percent of the region where you're locked down. And so they raised, they raised the, uh, standards on the number of defects. That's what's popping is, uh.